2025, Margot, please take it away.
I am Margot G. K., the Town Clerk of the Town of Morristown. Do hereby state that it is 7:35 PM on Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, and that this regular meeting is being held in Council Chambers, 200 South Street, Morristown, New Jersey. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided according to law by written notice to the Morristown Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Town of Morristown, and to the Newark Star-Ledger both more than 48 hours ago. Notice was also posted on the bulletin board at Town Hall and filed with the Office of the Town Clerk of the Town of Morristown. I do further state that I shall enter into the minutes of this meeting a statement that such notice was furnished as particularly described by me in this public announcement. I'll take a roll call. Councilwoman Foster.
Here.
Councilman Ayana Kohn.
Here.
Councilwoman Lindsay.
Here.
Councilman Polichuk.
Here.
Councilman Russo.
Here.
Councilman Silva.
Present.
Council President Umbria.
Here.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's please pause for a moment of silence. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I just have one quick announcement. I came to find out at the last meeting that it was announced that ordinance O-4 and O-5-2025 were going to be on the agenda tonight for a public hearing and adoption. I just want to correct that. Those two ordinances are scheduled for a planning board consistency review on February 20th and will be on the February 25th council agenda for a public hearing and possible adoption. Okay, we have two items on the consent agenda. Would any member of council like to pull them separately? Otherwise, I'd ask for a motion to adopt.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, on the adoption of the consent agenda, Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman Ayana Kohn.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes.
Councilman Polichuk.
Yes.
Councilman Russo.
Yes.
Councilman Silva.
Yes.
And Council President Umbria.
Yes.
Motion carries. At this time, I'll open the floor for a public hearing on any matter when called upon. Please approach the microphone, state your name and address, and limit your comments to five minutes or less. Please be advised that any derogatory comments targeting members of council and/or administration may be ruled out of order.
Mr. Burns.
Can anybody hear me? Okay.
Yeah, we hear you, Bill.
My name is Bill Byrne, and I live at 100 Franklin Street, Morristown, New Jersey. And I'm here to talk about the Medicaid issue. And I have proof of this because, number one, I'm on Zoom a lot with the ARC of the United States. And there's a lot of chatter in the ARC of the United States about Medicaid being cut. And it's like vitally important because it affects a lot of people. It affects senior citizens. It affects people with disabilities. And so that they have the money so that they can live out in the community. It affects direct care staff, job coaches, and everything above. So I'm asking everybody in this community to band together and to call your elected officials, to call your Senator, your congresspeople. Because there is a big problem in the Medicaid. If this gets cut, a lot of these service provider agencies, like ARC and others, will not be able to expand special needs housing and get jobs for people with disabilities out in the community. So I urge everybody throughout the community to please call their elected officials, even in Trenton, too. Because I'm starting a movement. And I'm starting with Morristown, which has been always supportive of people with disabilities and especially this mayor. And so I'm urging councilmen, mayors, throughout all 21 counties to please call their elected officials and say, no cuts in Medicaid. Because this is going to be very dangerous and it's going to be a slap in the face to senior citizens, to people with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Anyone else from the public? Mr. Armington.
Stefan Armington, 16 Cutler Street. I wanted to express my displeasure with the town installing no parking signs in front of my house across the street, basically in front of the Red Oak School, especially without any public input or any public notification. In my time, the administration never would have authorized that with, you know, the basic rule was you have to get, you work for the public, you should have gotten some public input. I expect that the reason this was done was to address the Montessori school, the Red Oak School, school bus, which parks in front of the Jewish Center, blocking the parent Q lane, thereby pushing the Q lane out into the middle of the road and creating a traffic hazard every time the school bus is there. Even though there's no parking in front of the school, there's been no real effort to force the school bus to park there. So it still parks in front of the Jewish Center, thereby creating the same problem that was there. The five cars that used to park in front of the school now back up in front of the school bus, creating an even bigger problem. So all I'd like to know is, one, what is the reason for the parking prohibition? I understand that eight years ago, when the Q parking in front of the school was implemented, the language of the law says 348 feet from X, Y, Z, which basically means that you can't park in front of the school, but that was never implemented. So I want to know what the reason is why you can't park in the front of the schools. And either talk to my neighbor, who now is parking two cars on his front lawn because he can't park on the street, or get rid of the parking if there's no real reason for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Jonathan Mayer, and I'm a little further away than I suppose you used to. 3450 Whitehall Drive in Willow Grove, Pennsylvania. I know. A little bit further.
Welcome.
Thank you for hearing me this evening. My name's Jonathan Mayer. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Stevens and Lee. I am speaking to you tonight from oh-sovery far away on behalf of Leaven to Heart. Their manager, Randy Masca, who I believe you, Mr. Mayor, have met, was hoping to speak with you all this evening about some concerns we have regarding the Homestead Bar. Unfortunately, he's had a death in the family, so he's unable to be here. So I am here in his stead. Now, my client, Essex Hall Leaven to Heart LLC, purchased the apartment building now known as Leaven to Heart in January 2024, right across the street from the Homestead Bar and Grill. Since the spring of that year, we've been inundated with complaints from our residents about noise coming from the Homestead. We've unsuccessfully been in contact with both Town Hall and the Police Bureau to have these addresses concerned. Unfortunately, since a very nice meeting with Mr. Mayor in November of 2024, we've seen no material change in the Homestead's behavior. Additionally, we've now learned that the Homestead has applied to expand its liquor license. I understand that there's going to be a hearing on that matter next week, which we will speak with you again at that time. And I just want to let the council know ahead of time that we strenuously oppose Homestead's application until Homestead can comply with Morristown's existing noise ordinance. And we also are very disappointed with Morristown's inability to enforce its existing noise ordinance against Homestead. As I stated, we've received complaints from our residents relating to noise and music coming from the Homestead well past 10:00 PM pretty much every evening, lasting until as late as 3:00 AM. It's a clear violation of Morristown's noise ordinance. In addition to the clear violation of the noise ordinance, it's also a violation of the promises that Homestead made to you last year when you voted to authorize the reauthorization of its consumption license in Resolution 99, 2024. In that resolution, Homestead was required to comply with all local noise ordinances and prohibit its patrons from congregating outside the immediate premises of the property. Homestead has flouted this requirement on numerous occasions. The fact that we're getting complaints from our residents from inside their apartments that they can clearly hear the noise coming from the Homestead Bar is unacceptable. In speaking with our residents, we've been told they've made dozens of complaints to the Police Bureau as a result of this behavior, but it's been allowed to continue. As I mentioned earlier, we did have a meeting with the mayor and members of Town Hall staff regarding this issue in November of last year. And we were truly hopeful that steps would be taken to address this issue. But since that time, no material steps to R.I. have been taken to prohibit Homestead from violating the noise ordinance. In addition to causing a disturbance to our residents, it has greatly affected our ability to maintain and run an apartment building in Morristown. In the last four months, we've had two residents break their leases early due to noise complaints. And we currently have five units that are unoccupied due to noise issues resulting in monthly rental losses of $20,000. Despite Morristown's knowledge of our complaints regarding the Homestead and our frequent communications on this issue, we only became aware of the Homestead's application to expand their rental license by reviewing the council's agenda. This is truly disappointing. And we must oppose Homestead's application until it can comply with its town's ordinances. Additionally, if the town is unable to enforce its ordinance against the Homestead, we'll be left with no choice but try to do so ourselves. I hope to speak with you all further regarding this issue in the future, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Last call for public comment. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Council response to public hearing comments. What do you like to respond? Do you like, Mr. Machell?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'll respond to the attorney who spoke, Mr. Mayor. I had the pleasure of speaking with Mr. Mayor earlier today. He had sent a letter yesterday outlining his concerns on behalf of his client. And I would just reiterate again what we spoke about on the phone, Mr. Mayor, that there is a hearing next week on the 18th at 7:00 PM. We have two hours. This council will act as the ABC Board for the Town of Morristown, where they will consider the application to extend the premises on 11 specific separate days. So what I encourage you to do is to advise your client that that would be the opportunity. We are, this council will take testimony from objectors. If there are individuals who wish to come forward, that will be the time. Because I know the council would like to have a robust record and look at all of the interests when they make a decision with regard to the application. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Any other comments? No? Okay. Yes, sir.
Can I bring up the police chief for a minute?
Yeah, sure.
Chief, can you come up and just address the comments that were just made on the noise complaints?
Hello, Chief.
With regard, I received a letter that Mr. Stevens, or Mr. Mayor, sent to us. And I did research since the meeting we had with him on November 12th of '24, myself, the mayor, the Public Safety Director, and the BA. We have not received one complaint of noise from that building and around that area. We've had 84 calls on the Hart Street. Nothing related to noise itself. When we spoke to the owner of the property back in November, we suggested to him that he call, his tenants call us, and we'll address it as it comes in. But to this day, we haven't received a complaint with regards to noise coming from the Homestead itself. When we get those, we can't self-generate a cost. We can't be offended by the noise itself. Someone has to call us, and we explain that to them. No one's called us yet.
Thank you.
Council President, if I could, I'll say to the chief, if chief, you could also be there next week to testify and provide that information at the hearing. That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
So I just wanted, for the record, that when this was brought to my attention, I did call the police chief and said, how many, you know, how many noise complaints did we get? Since that meeting in November, he said zero. So they may be complaining to the owner of the building, but they're not complaining, picking up the phone and calling the police so they can enforce noise ordinance. The police just can't say, hey, you know, like you just said, there has to be a call on the noise ordinance. And we've expressed that how many times? Numerous times over the years. Our residents have to call if there's a noise complaint. It's not a, it's their job, the police's job. And you guys actually made it easier for the police to enforce the noise by changing that ordinance. So I would suggest, I'm not an attorney, but I would suggest that message goes back to the owner that have your residents call the police and complain. And that's how you get things done. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Just wanted to address, Mr. Armington, your comments. You know, the whole situation started because I received a complaint about the school bus on the street. And when we researched the issue, at some point, the signs were up in compliance with the ordinance as written. At some point between 2013 and 2016, the signs were taken down. I can't find out, I've tried. I can't find out any reason why they were taken down. That initiated this whole series of events where the school has requested them to come back up to help with this situation. So I understand the frustration of not being able to park in front of your house during school days. So if you want to talk about changing the ordinance or doing something like that, I'm all ears. And I'd be happy to talk to you and your neighbors.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the mayor's proclamations and presentations.
Okay, before I do the first, the only proclamation I have, just wanted to read it to the record. I did a post today on it. Some of you know that ICE was in town last night. If you don't know, they came in late last night, in the evening. We've been kind of looking for some more information today, but are limited in information. I just want to read this into the record so everybody's aware. They are aware, but now I posted about two hours ago in the town. Last evening, I received a report that immigration and custom enforcement officers had made an arrest in Morristown outside of a local business, an action that was not communicated to Morristown Police Department or to our local government. We are still seeking information about the incident, which was captured on video and posted on social media. Morristown Police Department, like all the local and state law enforcement agencies, adheres to the directive established under the New Jersey State Attorney General's directives, which are regarding immigration matters, which means that we do not assist ICE or participate in any immigration enforcement activities. I want to be clear to Morristown residents that we value and respect the local immigrant community and that we will do everything in our power to ensure that their rights are respected and that they are treated with dignity and humanity during this uncertain time. Immigration is a sensitive and politically charged matter, which, while I believe that we can all agree that violent criminals do not belong in our community regardless of their immigration status, we must also stand together to ensure that law-abiding immigrants who are contributing to our society are treated fairly. We will be closely monitoring the situation and will work with our Hispanic community leaders, church congregations, nonprofits, and other organizations to support our immigration community. We just wanted you to have that on record, that there was one incident last night. I haven't received a lot of information, actually no information, other than informed by the police chief that they understood through an ambulance call. That's how they found out they were here. They're not going to tell us. They're not going to tell us if they're coming back or not coming back. And that's how they're going to operate. So we just want everybody to be aware.
Thank you.
And to share that with your community.
Yep.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. All right, Damon, come on up. Black History Month. Come on. What do you want to bring up, Damon? Come on, come on up. Stand up in front. Come on, let's go. Come out there, put your sneaker on. Yeah, that's all right, you're good. How you doing? All right. Okay. All right, this is a proclamation from Black History Month. And Damon, I asked if he would come up and accept this on behalf of him and his community and for the organization of what they bring to our community, which I'm going to let him speak about briefly right after we hand him this proclamation. Of course, we have our African-American councilwomen here. And of course, our business administrator sitting over there. And I think this is appropriate. Firstly, what I've seen, what you've been doing within our community and how we support each other. And it's been an honor and a pleasure to get to know you and to watch you grow in this community and work in. So I want to read this into the record and then say a few words on behalf of your organization. Proclamation. Whereas the origin of Black History Month began in 1915, a half a century after the 13th Amendment abolishing slavery in the United States and to coincide with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass, and grew out of the Negro History Week, was the creation of noted historian Carter G. Woodson and other prominent African-Americans. With the civil rights movement and growing awareness of black identity, Black History Month, or National African-American History Month, evolved to annual celebration of achievements by black Americans and a time for recognizing the central role of African-Americans in the United States. Getting this? All right. These accomplishments are even more remarkable as they were won at a great cost and with much struggle and sacrifice by men and women in chains and in servitude. The contributions of African-Americans from all walks of life and their endeavors to learn and thrive throughout history and make unforgettable marks in our nation as artists, scientists, educators, business leaders, influential thinkers, members of the faith community, athletes, and political and governmental leaders reflect the greatness of this United States. Remaining hopeful and confident about the path ahead in a time to acknowledge the courageous fight for the rights, liberties, and freedoms for all Americans, Morristown observes and honors Black History Month. Now therefore, I, Timothy P. Doherty, Mayor of the Town of Morristown, do hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month in the Town of Morristown. I encourage the Morristown community to join me in recognizing the tremendous contributions made by African-Americans and encourage all residents to honor black American history and culture. Thank you all for coming out and celebrating.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Damon Brown. I'm the president of Let's Come Together. It's a community-based group. This is my vice president, Mr. Roderick Smalls. This is my CFO, Ms. Kendra Pierce. And these are all of our people that does a great part to make this dream come true. Like Martin Luther King had a dream, this is really a dream, actually a dream. I woke up one afternoon, sit on the couch. I looked at my fiancee, well, my girlfriend at the time, and I said, it's time. She said, for what? I said, let's do this boxing match in the park. She said, what you mean? I'mma call sincere my best friend. I called him. He said, oh, man. I said, where you going? He said, I'm going to go to the boxing gym. I said, well, talk to Mr. Omar. To, oh, 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 right. See, make it happen. And we did it. All this is a dream. We unselfish, we came together. No Eagles, none of that. Everybody you see in front of us and the ones who are not here, like Tyrone King, Zory Towns, Owen Harold, E.P., Eric Pierce, Winifer Tolliver. It's a lot of us not here. And a lot of us, at first, we all came together, the whole community. I woke up and I went to everybody, everybody I thought that was with us. Let's get together. At first, it was about, what, you say 30 of us? Now look at us, you know? So as I say now, I say this. I'd rather have 10 lions than 100 sheep. Okay? So. On this day, can you hold me for a second? On this day, in the history of black love, this Kendra Pierce, will you marry me? This is, this. I wanted to tell it. Thank you. Thank yourself on being here to witness that. So please hold me accountable.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Nah, can't do it, let's say, yeah. Wow. That was a first.
I don't know if I can follow that.
That was amazing.
It was Mary, you can marry them now.
Did you know?
Well.
Did he know?
Eight, no, I didn't know. No. Wow.
Mary, you can marry him right now.
Damon, I don't know how I'm going to follow that with the rest of my, that is a first. And that will be remembered for many, 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 many decades to come.
That will be the headline tomorrow.
That will be the headlines tomorrow, for sure. But let me get through the rest of the report, and then we get on with the council meeting. That was absolutely beautiful. 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM, Calvary's Love Out fundraiser and gala in support of Calvary's summer youth program will take place at Ukrainian American Cultural Center with New Jersey. You can visit calvarybc.org to purchase tickets. That's February 14th. Tina, you want to mention your event?
Yes, we're having a fundraising, too, at Bethel Church. We've been doing it for years now. Tickets are $40. What we do, we take the money and people that come, that goes to recovery for mental health or drug addiction, we provide for them when they come home.
That's a beautiful thing.
And that will be the same day of Calvary, Friday at 7:00 to 11:00.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Tina. Sunday, the 16th, 2:00 PM, Greenbrook Brewery has their fourth annual chili cook-off. I'm one of the judges. I was a judge a couple of years ago. There are some interesting chilies people make. I told my wife she should put in next time. She makes good chili. So that's Sunday, 2 o'clock. Those who want to go to Greenbrook, Glenbrook Brewery for some chili. On Monday, the 17th, Town Hall will be closed
On Monday, the 17th, Town Hall will be closed in observance of President's Day. On Wednesday, the 19th, we have a senior Q and A at the Senior Center at 11:30 AM. If you're a senior and you've never been to one of them, it's worth going. It's, especially when there's a good turnout, they are, they have a lot of, they demand a lot of questions answered. They really, they really put you through the wringer, but they're great. On Saturday, February 22nd, noon to 2:00 PM, Community to Care, Protect Yourself Against Colon Cancer, Know Your Risk, Marion Sally, Resident Center. For questions, contact the Resident Center office at 973-310-6722, extension 132. That's Saturday, February 27th. That is Community to Care, Protect Yourself Against Colon Cancer. That's noon to 2:00 on the 22nd. That's an important date to remember, and it's an important thing to know about, especially as we get older, something you have to pay very close attention to. Special announcement, Morris Town Recreation is hiring for the 2025 summer season. Positions are open playground director, playground staff, pool gate attendants, lifeguards, swim team coaches. Visit townofmorristown.org/jobopportunities for more info. Call 973-292-6717. So get that out on your email thing. You have teens that are looking for jobs, summer jobs, and some, you know, people, you know, spouses that may not be working over the summer, looking for something to do. These are great opportunities to give back to the community and for kids to get jobs.
Can you repeat the number? I'm sorry.
Sure, it's 973-292-6717. You're welcome. And I think that's all I have. Am I missing anything? So all these flyers, all the things that I just posted will be on our website, so you can go to morristown.org for all the cook-off and the senior thing and the Calvary and Tina's event at Bethel. So that's it. And Raze's got 10 restaurants, right? She'll be, she'll be here the next, at the next, she'll be here the next meeting.
Tina, what about your bingo?
Oh, you want to mention bingo?
My next, right?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, all right.
All right, let's move to council liaisons and reports, and Councilwoman Lindsay.
Hi, I have a report for the Morristown housing. MHA was graded the highest performing grade for HUD. MHA is calculating rent correctly, performing inspection of the private landlord apartments, reporting data to the HUD in a timely manner, and MHA is using the Section 8 fund as a budget when reviewed from HUD. The president of, the president of the ordinance of freeze on the fundraising does not include the Section 8 fund housing authority. That's from the housing authority to report. And on the 21st of February, we have a mega bingo for the seniors, so everybody come out, support. It's going to be at 31 Early Street. We're going to try to get all the three villains together to have a great time. That's it. Let me.
Thank you. Councilman Polypchuk.
Our next meeting will be, for the Morris Town Partnership, will be 8:00 AM tomorrow morning, so I'll have a report for our next meeting.
Wonderful. Councilman Russo.
Next planning more meeting will be next Thursday, February 20th. It actually looks like it's going to be kind of a quiet one. That's all I got.
Okay, Councilman Silva.
Morris Parking Authority will meet tomorrow, 6:00 PM.
Okay. All right, wonderful. Let's move on to regular business, please, Marco.
Excuse me. Okay, there are three ordinances for introduction this evening. Ordinance number O-6-2025, ordinance amending and supplementing the code of the Town of Morris Town, Chapter 7 Traffic, Section 7-41.1, Regulation for the Movement and the Parking of Traffic on Municipal Property and Board of Education Property.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number O-6-2025.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions from council?
I have a comment. I'd just like to express thanks to Mayor and Jillian, our business administration team, town engineer, police chief, Darnell Richardson. We've talked about this just most recently, but I was so excited to see it on the agenda today for introduction, and he was well, our counselor, so just appreciate everybody's hard work in responding to the numerous complaints that have been coming in regarding the commercial vehicles that are parked in the parking lot on the MLK and Center of Coal Bishop Nazri Way. But, and as I was riding in today to the meeting, there was four trucks there and a semi-rig parked there. So rightfully so tonight. I'm so glad that we are introducing this. And again, I thank everybody for their help and their support, and I hope that council members, you guys, will support it as well, because the commercial trucks should not be using that parking lot for their own businesses and their own purposes. So appreciate the support if we can move it forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you too, Council President.
Sure.
Y'all, y'all as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, on the introduction of ordinance O-6-2025, Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman Anacon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes.
Councilman Polypchuk.
Yes.
Councilman Russo.
Yes.
Councilman Silva.
Yes.
Council President Umbreak.
Yes.
Ordinance O-6-2025 has been introduced properly by title and will be considered further after a public hearing on February 25th. Ordinance number O-7-2025, ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 3 Police Regulations Creating Section 3-34, which prohibits camping within the Town of Morris Town.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number O-7-2025.
Second.
Comments or questions from council?
You know, next week, maybe, this, we need this. I understand a lot of you need this, but I think what we should also be very clear about is what are the social services that are available? I know, Jillian, I thank you, when I brought up some issues with you, we got Morris County involved, and Morris County actually helped us in some situations. Everybody's been very responsive. And I also just want to say this, I do know this town, and I do know this town's police force, when they're enforcing regulations like this, they do it with their heart. So they're basically doing it in a manner where they're connecting the people to the social services that they need. And I think legally for the enforceability of this, we have to be very clear, and we do have it, we do have those social services available, particularly at the county level, at the county shelter up in Morris Plains.
Yep.
Okay, on the introduction of ordinance O-7-2025, Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman Anacon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes.
Councilman Polypchuk.
Yes.
Councilman Russo.
Yes.
Councilman Silva.
Yes.
Council President Umbreak.
Yes.
Ordinance O-7-2025 has been introduced properly by title and will be considered further after a public hearing on February 25th. Ordinance O-8-2025, ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 10 Filming, specifically Section 10-4 Fees, to add a fee schedule for use of public property for advertising and public relations, photography, still, or video.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number O-8-2025.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions from council? Okay, on the introduction of ordinance O-8-2025, Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman Anacon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes.
Councilman Polypchuk.
Yes.
Councilman Russo.
Yes.
Councilman Silva.
Yes.
Council President Umbreak.
Yes.
Ordinance O-8-2025 has been introduced properly by title and will be considered further after a public hearing on February 25th. There is one ordinance for public hearing and adoption, that's ordinance O-3-2025, and ordinance amending and supplementing the code of the Town of Morris Town, Chapter 7 Traffic, Section 7-40.2, Handicap Parking on Streets for Private Residences, to amend the placard number assigned to a dedicated parking space for a resident on Columbus Street.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number O-3-2025.
Second.
At this time, I'll open the floor for a public hearing on ordinance O-3-2025 only. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from council? On the adoption of ordinance O-3-2025, Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman Anacon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes.
Councilman Polypchuk.
Yes.
Councilman Russo.
Yes.
Councilman Silva.
Yes.
Council President Umbreak.
Yes.
Motion carries, ordinance O-3-2025 is adopted. There are six resolutions to be considered this evening. Would members of council like to pull any for separate consideration?
45, please. 45.
Any others? Okay, with that, I would please ask for a motion to adopt Resolution Numbers R-46-2025 through R-50-2025.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
On the adoption of those resolutions, Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman Anacon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes.
Councilman Polypchuk.
Yes.
Councilman Russo.
Yes.
Councilman Silva.
Yes.
Council President Umbreak.
Yes.
Those resolutions are adopted. Resolution R-45-2025, Resolution Authorizing an Agreement with Poppy's Concession to Rent Space and Provide Concession Services at the Burnham Park Pool During the 2025 Season.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number R-45-2025.
Second.
Councilman.
Just want to say the same thing I said last year. It's the right concessionaire. I've heard nothing but good things about him. I'm really happy that it's a Morris Town resident that is running this, and, you know, from a family that is there all summer. My kids love it. It's, the prices are right, the food's the right thing.